So while we're waiting, I'll just ask some not part of the formal panel questions. And you guys can feel free not to answer. So for all three of you, what was your strategy, if any, for the Bitcoin halving? Was it priced in, not priced in, up, down? Let's see, I need to unmute. Let's go with Joe first.
Yeah, I'm just not touching it with a 10-foot pole for myself personally. Yeah, no, I'm definitely, I'm not a fan of personally day trading. Although the guys do, but I'm not one that likes to do that. And I'm, you know, honestly, it's really crazy the way it can just go up and down. The speculation is insane.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions from the audience early on about what was the strategy? You know, up, down, which crypto to go in? But yeah, that's not going to be part of the formal panel. But yeah, while we're waiting, Aaron, do you mind sharing?
Yep. So I'm with Joe on this one. I don't know how to day trade. I don't know how to chat. So I'm the guy who buy and hold and think over a long period of time, you should be fine. Of course, granted, I also like sometimes, okay, I feel like it's a bit too expensive. I set a lower price and then wait for it to drop. So, but I don't think I have any. I don't think I'll be able to give any like predictions on price estimates, I think. Although we've, I mean, we've kind of started, if you're a Luna customer, we've kind of started sharing market insight newsletter. In the newsletter, it goes out every week. So as long as you made a recent transaction, you should be getting that. So that might be a lot more informative than my own strategy.
All right, and QI, I'm gonna unmute, you know?
Okay, thanks. Personally, I normally have a portfolio. I do dollars, so it means that over, you know, as a class of Bitcoin, I don't really care about rises. You know, we're looking. Then it can, this is to trip. On different portfolio. So, but I think, you know, giving fair share, our team also do some analysis. So if you go to our Facebook page, the nice Malaysia, you will see in a daily basis, we share certain financial outlook and also digital asset pricing. If you're a trader, you can go over to our page, it's free. Since it's free, then you can have insight. It will be basically, apparently, every week, we also have, we have at least one, let me know, to share about financial outlook and some strategy, like scalping or, you know, arbitrage strategies. So if those who are interested can feel free, you know, to try the webinar, it is free. Hopefully, from there, it can open certain insights for you.
All right, so I think this is gonna continue on with the earlier conversation. But since we mentioned Bitcoin halving, did you see any trends in your own experience, on your own exchanges? How were the market responding? And if I extend it a bit longer from the start of the MCO and with, for example, in the US money printer Gober, did you see any certain trends in your exchanges? And let's go with QI first.
Yeah, I think a long term, I'm very bullish. I'm not a fan of, you know, price prediction. So I don't think the market will care what I share. But along the lines, I'm very bullish to mine and also few established digital asset. The idea is that I feel that we are still at a very early stage. And with a lot of asset classes, you know, undergo competitive, someone, you know, asset classes are Bitcoin, which undergo quantitative underling, which, you know, we encountered the reason how we, definitely, there are a lot of factors to be bullish about. And the heating still, we are at a very early stage, we are more audience than we can convert. I think the step to look into the population, we are looking less than 1% who are in this crypto community or no digital community. And when the numbers grow to 5%, 10%, I believe the market follows, so, right? And to put into perspective also. He's not, yes, you know, 10 US company. So in the potential side, I think there are, you know, a lot of space that the digital asset like Bitcoin came. That's the idea. So long, I'm very bullish.
And Joe?
And Joe? Yeah, so on the exchange, not so much. But I think definitely as having came close, you'd get, you'd get a lot of interest. And, you know, being in the space, you just get a lot of things. Not just myself, but the team as well, right? You get a lot of folks from the outside being us and saying, suddenly, hey, what is Bitcoin? And how do I get in? And how many percentage can I get every month? And stupid things like that coming up, just because, you know, it's been in the news and it's become popular. I don't think at the moment, I would say that due to the halving, I'm not going to speculate on whether it's going, which way it's gonna go. But yeah, as far as enthusiasm is concerned, usually same as the last halving, right? When it's all over the news, someone will come in and start asking, not so much on the exchange, no.
And Aaron and Luna? Sorry, sorry, I need to unmute you quick.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I couldn't unmute myself. So interestingly for us, at the start of the MCO, I guess, when you saw, again, around mid-March, when all the global markets crashed. So there was a lot of selling activity in Luna as well. I think in line with everything, there's a lot of selling. And then during the MCO period itself, it wasn't as, it wasn't as huge as we might have expected. Because I think, like, some people have seen that, you know, Rakuten trade sign up like 10,000 new customers or something like that. Because I think a lot of people were at home trading. So we were expecting a lot of interest. There was some interest, but not, not crazy interest. But towards the end of the MCO, especially as we approached near the halving, now we're seeing quite record levels of trading and also interest signing up. So it's quite, quite busy times for us. So we are, actually, we are a little bit struggling with the number of signups right now. So if you've got any friends who are asking why, because we're dealing with massive queues. So we're trying to get through it as soon as possible. But yeah, you can tell your friends that we're very sorry because we can't deal with it right now. Trying our best, so.
Maybe you can get the community to volunteer doing KYC for you. We had, since we're on the topic, we had a question from Yik Young, one of the members earlier, on what's the typical age range and occupation of your users? And I guess, make it general, what's your typical user profile? And go with Joe first.
Yeah, okay, so for us, I would say mid-20s to early 30s. And we see a lot more arbitrage traders usually on our system. We got a good mix of, you know, folks mostly from urban areas. But we also do see like East Coast traders come in a fair bit on and off. But yeah, so quite a good mix in general.
And QI?
Yeah, I think roughly, you know, we have the same stats, mid of 20 to, you know, 40, 40 plus. We just, you see, those who are 50, yeah, they are very active in the digital assets.
All right, and?
All right, and you know?
For us, it's pretty similar as well. The 25 to 34 is the first primary rate range. And then the 35 to 44, I think, is the second most common one. So basically, your millennials and your Gen X, interestingly, majority men. So I see all the names in this chat are so men. So, you know, do what you have to do, invite your girlfriends, invite your wives to trade. Plus predominantly, it's still men right now.
I think I saw a couple females, at least in the RSVPs. If you don't mind sharing, and if you want to defend your gender, please feel free to put it in the chat. Otherwise, yeah, what Aaron said is probably correct. Anyway, so now that it's been a month plus since we had our lockdown or movement restrictions, can you share some of your challenges or strategies in dealing with the working remote? I can go with Aaron.
It's actually been super hard. We've been on full working remotely since slightly before the MCO, we preemptively did it. So we've all been stuck at home for like seven weeks now. It's hard because we find ourselves working more, more than usual. Because for the simple reason that it takes, even the simplest thing can take so much more effort to do. Like last time, you can walk over to your colleague's table and just sort it out within 30 seconds right now. You have to set up a chat, you set a call. So it's been super hard. I think everyone's dealing with how to segregate work with life. I think what's helped us is we tried to work on routines. So at a certain time, we have our wine down routine. So at a certain point in time, we'll have a meetup to just talk about casual stuff and end the work week. That's been the adjustment that we've made. Otherwise, it's really hard for us, actually.
And in Luna's case as well, since you have international branches, how has that been managed?
Yeah, so we are overseas in all the markets that we are in and all our offices. We're also on fully remote working because I guess COVID is everywhere. So it's pretty much similar. And then we have, our HR team has been pretty proactive. So they've been sharing tips on how to work from home, tips on mental health, which may seem a bit over. But I think after multiple weeks of like trying to separate between work and life, then you start to realize, yeah, actually mentally, I get a little bit strained. So yeah, that has been very helpful from the HR team.
I think this hasn't been really the case for me, but I know of people who've been stuck at home by themselves. And a month long being stuck, I guess it's kind of, it's essentially solitary confinement. So yeah, not fun to be in that position. Can I get Joe to share your story?
Yeah, so yeah, similar to Aaron, right? We also triggered our work from home prior to the MCO going off. To be honest, the moment that I had our first case, we started to go, yeah, you know, let's back it up and, you know, just operate remotely. But what that ended up meaning was that our final review with SC and our go-live actually happened during the MCO as well. So not only was it running operations from home, it was deployment. So that really made things quite interesting. But that being said, you know, we did, we did manage to come together. In my prior life, I did majority of my work from home as well. So I did have a good experience in managing teams remotely. So that, I guess, it does help to coordinate. But all in all, it was a, you know, massive team effort for everybody to get together and be able to figure out who needs to do what and make sure we're not stepping on each other's toes, doing double work, stuff like that. Rolled out really well and I thought, you know, we did a great job. As with many new companies, though, most of our systems are already designed to be online. We did factor in that remote management is required. So switching to remote, all in all, was not as difficult. Mainly the deployment through a bit of a monkey wrench in our, you know, our planning. But, you know, it was good learning and it went out smoothly. An interesting thought on the, on how COVID is hitting us, right? They are tradition, for us, we are young companies and we could adapt to this work from home quickly. But if you think about all those older companies, large corporations that have thousands of folks, I know that many of them were playing around with the idea of having partial work from home or full work from home stuff. But none of them actually invested the cost into enabling the work from home. Like you have set up your VPNs and your secure hardware and things like that to work remotely. And, you know, it was just never a priority. But COVID somehow forced this, you know, expense into these companies. And now that they've sunk this cost, I would think that a number of them are probably discovering that certain functions of the office can actually work well remotely and it saves, you know, footprint costs on sites and things. So after the restrictions are lifted, I still feel that a lot of companies, especially those big ones with thousands of employees, a substantial portion of them, like maintain this work from home method since the cost has sunk. And, you know, it's gonna change, have knock-on effects on little things like transportation, fuel consumption, home deliveries and things like that. So yeah, this, this COVID thing really did shake things up a little bit. I think we're gonna see some changes in how traditional and modern offices work after this.
Maybe no more offices.
Not no more, you know, you can't, you can't, you can't do an operation. You can't build a computer from your hall, right? For mass production. So, you know, certain roles, I think, you know, everyone has looked at it as a, as a, it's sort of a social experiment, really, that most people thought telecommuting was gonna be a thing. It's just that you have to spend money and figure out if it's for your company or not. And COVID is just forcing it. And, you know, might have a knock-on effect. Be interesting to see.
Right, and QI, I'm gonna wait for a bit before I unmute you.
Yeah, but maybe one thing, we are quite lucky is before, you know, everyone, we managed to gather, especially, you know, me and my team, we have a chance to gather together, we almost have. And maybe, I think, if you just prepare us, you know, when we have to force the work from home. Of course, as a tech company, I think, you know, we're always ready to work, no matter where we are. At the same time, Malaysia team, we manage a team in Vietnam, Singapore and also Thailand. So pretty much, we are already there, you know, through all the communication channels. Like, we are always, you know, able to communicate, whether I'm with the team or not. But it's still made a difference, you know, when totally, you know, we just have to online. There's no physical pressure right now. I think we go through this almost two months plus. It's a very fresh experience. In fact, you know, our BCP, we don't even have this consideration. We thought the worst case, you know, you need to prepare is a strict operation. And I think this COVID thing really dishes a lot of business owner and really accelerate their business. Who can imagine, right? Last time we thought office space is necessary. But this COVID just proved that, you know, if you still stay with office space, then your businesses can run. You have to be work, you have to improve. And this definitely impact cars, a lot of business owner now, you start to think, if my employee, you know, a thousand of my employees can work from home, what is the point of having office space? A lot of mindset, I think, will be changed, even how you operate the business also will change, right? So I think that's interesting.
All right, so to go back into regulation side of the story. I saw synergy was covered yesterday in the Life in Tech Malaysia. And the team said that you're interested in looking into doing IOs, so initial exchange offerings. So Joe, can you share your thoughts on the general regulation around IOs and the general market? And then what your company's plans are for that? Define your name to unmute you, okay? You should be good.
All right, we're good, yeah. This mute on new things confused. So yeah, we were optimistic on the enthusiasm that the IO space can bring. We're looking forward to when the SC drops the final framework out, which we do expect is sometime later this year. And we are interested in participating in this space, but not so much. You know, we're, we're interested in providing the technology side of it. I don't, it's going to be an interesting space, but we really do want to see what the final framework is gonna be like before we actually lay out the actual plans that we're going to participate in the IO space. As far as we're concerned, though, this, if the IO does come by and it is welcoming to the development, you know, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna encourage a lot of development in our space. And I think the things like the DeFi space, if it drops, we can actually see encouragement for local, local folks to start listening in this, in this area. And, you know, anything to do with improved enthusiasm around blockchain industry is gonna be good for business for us. So for, for all three of us, you know, in the exchanges here. As for the actual strategy, I think I'm gonna hold out until we get the actual framework on the table. Yeah.
As an, as an observer, like, you never really hear about, I mean, the ICO hype has died down. And IOs, I guess, do happen, but it's not as in the spotlight anymore. So I'm wondering if, especially as a Malaysian exchange or Malaysian branch of an exchange, whether there is enough of a market of people who want to fundraise using IOs.
I think it's the other way around. I think when the IO drops and the projects hit the table, it will build a market. You know, it's going to be a fantastic bridge for many people to start seeing the use of blockchains outside of just being digital money. And, you know, from that alone, we can sort of use it as a platform to bring people into understanding what the big deal of it is, right? So I think that market will be generated by the development we see in this space, not so much as this space looking for, for money to be developed.
Okay, and Aaron and QI, if you want to chip in on IOs as well, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, QI, maybe you go first?
I saw Aaron's place. I think pretty much all patents, you can launch, because sample frame was a bit different. They are, you know, a few different format of open, where we can actually run a yield. So, sorry. Okay, sorry. So I think, yeah, but then in Malaysia, I think the format is very different because looking at the securities. So this will be totally new experience for us. And definitely, we are look forward for partners who are keen, you know, on this IO. And then we will see how we're going to pursue IO. Although, technically, to implement this, you know, it can leverage on past experience. But yeah, in Malaysia, you just look for, you know, right strategy partners. And we will see how we're moving forward. The first on, you know, you know, give the best experience to the local community first. And I think on, on digital asset side, you know, there are so a lot of misconceptions, a lot of groundwork to do. Second, also, you know, to create brand and us, I think, pretty much, you keep us occupied this year.
We've been finding a lot of interest from, so a lot of people have been approaching us, even without the final guidelines from the S. I mean, there's guidelines, but there's no application yet, right? We don't know how to submit application or when. But I think the, the general interest in the market is very positive. These are small companies, tech companies, they are large conglomerates who want to fundraise using digital tokens because they think they're advantageous. So I think the IO market is big here, definitely. I was looking at some, some stats on, if we look at equity crowdfunding or P2P, we think that the market for IO will be at least that of the equity crowdfunding, which is potentially at least tens of millions of ringgit a year, if not hundreds of millions of ringgit. So in terms of the actual strategy as to whether we'll do it ourselves, whether we'll partner, I think we are similar to the others. We really need to see what it entails before we, we make the decision on how we want to do the IO thing. But I think overall market sentiments are very positive.
And I guess, now that you mentioned it, Pitch In, I think, announced last month that they want to try to IOs as well. Do you think, how easy do you think it is for a non-crypto company to suddenly start doing something like an IO?
I think, well, I mean, there's a lot of blockchain developers in the space now. I mean, if you say five years ago, probably it's gonna be very challenging. But I think there's lots of blockchain developers in the market now. So probably technical expertise is, is already there to be hired or to be built. But I think the challenge would be not so much on just the technical side, but running a digital asset business, which I think is a little bit different from just a pure technical side of things. So yeah, I think that will be the, the challenge, really, the digital asset side of the business.
All right, so while still on regulation, we had a couple of questions actually from the meetup members, even before the talk started, specifically on tax. So the first question, which I guess is an obvious answer, but we should let all three of you answer, is our transaction information being actively shared with LHDN? So a quick answer from all three of you.
Yeah, we don't share directly to LHDN, no.
When you say directly, so is there an indirect way that you're sharing?
No, we only, we only have the information. If it's not, at the moment, if it is not something that is, you know, tied in with the, with any, I would say, doggy situations, right? There's no plans to actually just share out any information. So yeah, you know, leave it at that.
Yeah, so definitely not, we don't share the information with LHDN. Like what Joe say, there are exceptions, of course. Like, let's say there's a court order that says that XYZ is involved in a drug trafficking case and we need access to his trading records. Then because the letter comes from the court, then we would be, I guess, in this situation, we'd be, we'd be compelled to do it. But I mean, if people are trading normally, they shouldn't have to worry about that. We have to follow PDPAs well. And you can't just simply share people's information like that across government agencies like that, just because somebody asked for it. So yeah, we will do everything we can to protect privacy.
And QI? All right, you should be good.
Yeah, I think, sorry, I think, um, pretty much, it's a, it's a same, like, you know, but you know, synergy try to share, we must have the same sense. We value a lot of PDPA and it's not like what the public think, you know, the information we're anyhow sharing to relevant agency, right? Yes, I think just to sidetrack a bit, some educator on a crypto community, they even share that, don't trade, you know, regulated exchanges. You know, because you are constantly being monitored. I think that's just misconceptions. They, they, it's not really like what they imagine that way. It's much safer and secure because we are under governance, there's governance in place. So yeah, that's, that's, I'm, that's the point I want to highlight, yeah.
All right, I didn't know if that answer is gonna satisfy. Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna satisfy all the sort of hardcore cypherpunks, but it is what it is. And the next question also from a meetup member, Amirul asks, what's the tax situation like for trading crypto? Maybe Joe, if you, if you know, you can share.
At the moment, I think, what do we fall under capital gains? It's not really a thing right now for crypto, right? So this is, this is, currently, if it's under capital gains, if you declare your, your profits, then yes. But there's no like trading profit taxes or anything like that that exists.
Currently, if it's under capital gains, if you declare your, your profits, then yes, but there's no like trading profit taxes or anything like that that exists.
Okay. And Aaron and Q Y, feel free to chip in.
If we go with the.
We be go.
If we go with the typical L H D N guidance, again, this is. From, this is common practice by L H D N. I don't think they've been very clear about crypto gains, but we look at other capital gains like stock market gains. Or things like that. They are not, they are not taxable. But if we are talking about, you know, you are using, you're doing it as a source of income. That whatever that, you know, if you do it as a source of income, whatever the activity is, you should probably declare it and pay your taxes.
I, that's a good point. If it's for salary, then yes, it's, it's taxed, yeah, for example.
Yeah.
For example.
Yeah, I think my, of course, I'm not the best spokesperson of these, but I have the same understanding with what Aaron just said. On the revenue or the income from investment, but if you are doing this like day trading, like become a full time job. Or your, as a secondary income, where you're always in, out of the market, you know, pretty, yeah, I think you have to be. On income as an income tax, yeah.
Yeah, I keep my records just in case.
Yep. Okay. So. So another question from the meetup members is that. The crypto industry as it is right now is very small and you faces a lot of challenges with. Education and preventing miseducation. And as, and I want to add this in. Since all three of you are relatively new, are there any plans to do any joint initiatives? Who sort of educate the market more on how cryptocurrency is useful and how Malaysians can benefit from it? Maybe Aaron, you want to start?
Yep, definitely. So we've, I think that's the online part of it and there's the offline part of it. The online part is things like webinars, website, blog, YouTube channel. I think all of this we've been doing for a long time. The offline part of it is the one that we wanted to put more effort this year, sort of roadshows, face-to-face engagement, but. Obviously due to COVID nineteen, we have not been able to do much. So I think the, the strategy will, will fall back to, to online. Yeah, I think we, there have been also talks actually between the three digital asset exchanges ourselves. Maybe to do some joint education talk, so it's not seen as biased or, you know, one-sided. And hopefully we'll be able to announce more of those kind of stuff soon. But yeah, it's, it's going to be online mostly moving forward.
All right. And Q Y?
Yeah. And I definitely this initiative won't be just one or two month thing. I think we will go through a plan to see how we can create this awareness and, you know, I believe the whole community. Understanding and those misconceptions, I think the person can, you know, quite investment. You know, and money game, because some game will still be very sophisticated. They also can talk blockchain as good as it is. It's just that they change the direction to most care. So a lot of things are bad, so.
Yeah. So he meant, Hall mentioned, he mentioned the important point, which is money games, right? And we're from Penang, so we know all about money games and how the market here is, is very big on it. So you know, right now, the understanding is here, the where education needs to be is up here and everything in between is where all these money games lie. And really, education is forefront for us as well. Yes, we've been in talks, we'll, we'll, we'll wait to talk more about it once the details are ironed out. But other than that, any chance of reaching out to the greater masses and teaching people about how crypto works and how, you know, how to avoid scams? That's a big part of what we want to do. And we're always happy to, to be invited to speak, you know, at events to help share the word. It's very, and personally is a, is a big part of why I'm in this space personally as well.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm sure all the creatives that are involved, even within this call, would be, I would love to work with you, with you guys as well. And on that note, because of the troubles with regulations that Malaysians have faced. I'm sure you know as well that a bunch of Malaysians have moved to trading, say on O T C markets or. Maybe international exchanges like Binance. So what are your strategies to try and reclaim that? That market for yourselves? Maybe Joe?
Well, first up, the user experience is, is always much better in a centralized exchange, right? We've traded on P two P before and it is quite laborious and also prone to scams as well. Man in the middle comes to mind, things like that. And of course, I think markets will, will tend to understand that over time, you, you'd see things that. Regulated exchange has, exchanges have such as the safety nets to avoid. Sorry, safety net to avoid things like bump and dumps and wash trading. These are things that are required for us to, to put into our system to improve customer protection. We have circuit breakers and things like that, that are, you know, must be in place. Which just make sure that customers can trade in a safer space. On top of that, we have to assign regulator trustees to appoint and oversight our client assets to avoid misappropriation of funds. So you know, a lot of these things are innate. It's not an active strategy to go and pull things out of the P two P exchanges. But people will see the difference and understand what it is, right? When they put themselves at risk on an unregulated platform versus a regulated platform. On the topic of international exchanges and O T Cs, that ones are hit and miss, right? That there is benefits for them to, to be trading on those exchanges because. It's, it's welcome activity in our domain. Traders pay attention to the spreads between these exchanges and our local exchanges and welcome to arbitrage these markets. And you know, it generates liquidity between us and the international market. So it's not necessarily a bad thing.
And maybe Aaron?
Yep. I think additionally, yeah, Joe put those points so excellent. So like, not. Like he took the words out of my mouth, right? But I think just additionally. I think we, we don't necessarily have to compete head on, right? Like how do you compete with Binance? Because number one, Binance is unregulated. Number two, they list like, I don't know, hundreds, if not thousands of coins. And that's never going to happen in a regulated exchange, right? Because even the coins that we list, we actually have to discuss it with the S E to get approval. So it's really a matter of seeing how we can offer the best user experience. Again, it's trade-offs, right? I think as customers. If you are a sort of, I guess, discerning customer, you will realize that when you go to an. International or unregulated exchange, you are taking a lot more risks for whatever benefits that you're getting. So whereas we want to offer something that is safe, regulated, something local. And I think we might lose some of the, maybe the high-end customers to these international exchanges, but. For the majority of Malaysians, they will probably want to trade on a local regulated exchange. So as long as we give them the best local service. I think that will be the winning strategy.
And Q Y?
Yeah, I think pretty much, you know. Highlight, you know, the beauty of regulatory action is, we honestly. And it's definitely not easy job to, to, to. Trustee for, for even on the bank that you. Your ring gate and also digital asset, we have to find reputable partners and ensure the key is, you know, not just by the management of the company, but we have an independent trustee. On top of that, you know, we also put compliance and a formal track. The idea is to give you a safe arrangement. If you are looking for me to become that form or I agree that you just off that form, right? The idea is you don't know who you treat with, right? You might be a good person, you are, you don't have the intention to do any bad things. But you don't know, you know, you deal with your company, where is their source of money, right? You are exposing the risk into getting into a problematic situation where, you know, it's not necessary. So I think that's the key idea, you know, when you still, you know, using this P two P, you have to always ask yourself, is it feasible for the long run? Is this safe enough? Do you know the platform, you know, are they liable for anything? Can they just close shop and you know? And decided not to operate tomorrow, right? I think, I know they, I think these are the key question investors will issue us themselves. Of course, if you are in a prediction stage, you're not, the regular that is still not available. You have no try, right? I'm Malaysia now, you have a choice, right? Yeah, that's.
And I think one of you mentioned earlier about the process for listing coins on your exchanges. Would you be able to describe to us the listeners how that works? Is it like, do you have to lobby together to talk to S E or one exchange suggests it or the community can push for it? Would you be able to share how that works? Maybe Q Y?
Um, I think definitely like, I think, I believe one discussion we have with, you know, is because back as you have already. Let's say approve the, the, the fourth token on coins. Definitely three of the proof I changed can definitely list it and support it. So why not, you know, if, if something that everyone has the same interest. We definitely can work, work on it together. I think that's, I will pass to Aaron, yeah, to share.
Cool. So if we look at the S C's guidelines, it's, you need to submit. I guess a paper to, and that explains multiple things. For example. Explains how decentralized is the coin, who is the founding team? What, what is the technology behind the coin? There are many things that are described. So it's a bit like application for, for some. For like even like a mini version of application for our exchange. As to whether who can submit it, like can a member of the community submit it? I'm actually not sure. But definitely for, for exchanges, when we want to list a token, we have to submit it to the S E lah. I think it's possible to do it like Hall mentioned, it's possible to do it a joint submission or if you go separately also, I think the S E accepts submissions.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll check. So yeah, I think exactly what they said, right? What Aaron and Q Y said, we, we can submit it individually. And of course, if you have a single voice, it's obviously going to have a better effect with the S E. You know, it's not like we're trying to block one out of the air, but outside of that, we also have to pay attention to the things like the demand, the tokenomics before proposing. Any coin to the S E. We also just don't want to propose any random coin of that, you know, gets shut down or. It's tied into something that we are not, that's not in line with our business practices, right? Yeah. So and I think I'm just going to extend it out to, I, I think a lot of people keep asking about stable coins. When it comes to how do you list this and then, you know, come and list some stable coins with, for, for us and you know, put in U S D T. But at the end of the day. Number one is the S E's prerogative, right? To, to decide on it. And of course, when you're talking about things like stable coins. You're entering into the foray of like Bangla Gara's area. Listing a U S D T is not much different from using, listing a U S D and the U S D T is not governed by the U S Fed. So you know, you, you really want to play in that pool right now. So yeah, I think a lot of questions come around that, especially like stable coins and stuff.
Yeah, I think personally I see, well, what I understand happens in O D C markets is people buy stable coins more with Ringgit. And then they go into other cryptocurrencies. And maybe for the listeners, if you have any points you'd like to share to the exchanges, you can put it in the chat. And you can have a sense of what the community likes. But related to that though, and, and with helping adoption for the regulated exchanges. One idea that I've heard being thrown around and I would personally love is if there is a dollar cost averaging method to go into your exchanges. Let's say I put in my credit card once a month and then you just buy it for me automatically. I think that would be amazing. And yeah, I think stable coin would fit that idea very much. But have you thought about using, creating features like allowing for dollar cost averaging?
Should I?
We can go with Job, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's in the roadmap. Yeah. So, so yeah. Yeah, it's definitely a feature that, that, you know, adds value to the community.
Okay, good to hear.
Yeah, it's like hello ghost thing, right? So. Believe you want to do it, but it's in the roadmap. I mean, yeah, there's tons of stuff on the roadmap. So. Have to, have to go one by one, right? Yeah, but it's there.
And Q Y?
Sorry, yeah, about asking the community to tell us what are the coins that they really like and throw it up there, you know? Let's have a informal survey of what's out there in the Malaysian market right now. All right. Sorry, Q Y interrupted you, but.
In Norway, I'm just saying that you have the same standard or, or, or. Definitely it's a very key feature that I love, I start looking at. So yeah, fully can use this.
Right. So we have 10 minutes before our speakers need to go. They've already spent longer than earlier promised. So before we go off, I think I'd like to shift it a bit towards DeFi and what your thoughts are on that. So especially since we mentioned stable coin, one very sort of unmissable stable coin is the die. And you know, even especially with that, you can even do things like. Automatically link it out to your own wallet and then, or put it into a DeFi platform. But to start, what are your personal thoughts on DeFi and like, have you used any of those? DeFi platforms yourselves?
Platforms yourself?
Yeah, Q Y, maybe you can start.
Maybe. Yeah, but I mean, it's a very complicated role right now as a coder, definitely. If I seems like it's a crypto farm, it's a way to go, but you're. For the DeFi community might not be happy to hear about this, but we, we stand on the C five, not so you guys have us. We, yeah, we, we, you know, pay what if I have by the centralized finance way. But you still, you know, have a lot of beauty about blockchain app, right? It's just that at these junctures, if you see, I'm, I'm so sorry to bear a bit of a backside of the device that there are a lot of incidents, there are a lot of bugs. I'm not say define, actually, I, I receive this is going to be a, be a, be a thing in the future, but at least now at this juncture, I think they will get that. Right? There are, there are a lot of risks. We are talking about monetary right now. No matter the die, you know, they also facing some bugs. And basically, the other issue is a flash loan, if I mean for technical people, they, they are aware of flash loan. There are a lot of exploitations, right? And we are not talking about few thousand or hundred thousand, talking about millions. At this juncture, I believe, you know, regular changes, if they can pay further, they are giving to centralized finance. We can do a pretty good job in the way that, you know, we are talking about insurance without, without trust, without governance. So all this aspect, you know. If I can serve. Maybe it is. Your time as a traditional fist. It will be fine, you know, when the debt from on the D fire more stable and I am, you know, also a bit cool now. And we find a bit bad and so sorry to say this, but yeah, you know, you can do any of those are coming out with. You know, G20 and others are coming out with fair rules and others. DeFi will face a lot challenging moment to push the channel ahead, right? But I think you'll step back, a lot of things you should learn from DeFi. I think it really. And really, you know. Something for the right, so just speculation, what else, you know, what really is this, what finances, things that you can. Very impressive things to wonder about.
Aaron?
I think DeFi is the definitely gonna be a something major and continue to grow. It's already something major, but I think it's only gonna continue to grow. I think as much as we thought about the decentralized world, the decentralized world will learn from the centralized world, right? Finance is, there's a lot going on in lending and things like that, that decentralized finance will pick up and learn along the way. As to whether we are gonna be looking at introducing these features, definitely, we're already thinking about it. But as what Hong has mentioned, I think there's so many considerations, right? Again, we are regulated, so it's not a simple matter of saying, yes, let's introduce DAI tomorrow, right? We need to speak to the SE, we need to think about all the legal considerations, we need to think about all the fairness considerations, transparency, you know, are the team behind the tokens reasonable, are they, what's their reputation? So again, yeah, it's one of those things that hopefully we can roll out, it's on the roadmap. But, you know, if we don't roll it out, don't quote me because maybe somewhere along the way, we found a roadblock that we can't fix right now.
Job?
Yeah, well, I think my stand on DeFi is a personal standard. I think that there is going, it is messy right now. A lot of people have lost a lot of money, but then there's still a lot of development in that space. And it's kind of good to go and get yourself burned at this stage because whatever you learn now is going to be applied to whatever you have in the future. There are still going to be applications for decentralized finance. And I stand that there's going to be benefits only because DeFi, the basics of it, if I can, if I can picture it, is to remove friction from centralized financial systems, right? You're, if everything is running on a blockchain or some form of a digital asset management system, then things can transact smoothly with minimum interference from intermediaries and things like that. So these, there is an opportunity to develop in this space. There is a lot of potential, I would see. I may not, you know, agree with all of the things like certain P2P lending methods and things like that that is being played with. You know, it's too scary, but I definitely see that innovation in this space will push the blockchain ecosystem in the future. It just doesn't make sense to not have development in decentralized finance. There may be some portions of it that are more riskier than others. But I mean, if you consider things like central banks coming on with their own digital currencies in the future, this puts them on the same wavelength as certain cryptocurrencies. It's not, I mean, I'm not shilling for central banks, central bank coins, right? What I'm just saying is that they're essentially going to be a digital asset with a centralized governing portion. But then, you know, you can now interact with it almost frictionless. So there are financial services that can benefit from that. And, you know, it's just gonna need to see development, more and more development in that space. So I think that the money going into DeFi is going to be very, it's gonna be bigger than what it is now. And it is already big, just how big and who's gonna get burned along the way? And how much people are gonna lose money from mistakes? That's gonna be interesting to watch, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a few minutes left. I think I'll have, just keep to two very short questions. Since Job, you mentioned CBDC, Central Bank Digital Currency. What are your thoughts, all of you, on CBDC, like two, three lines max?
All right, so, yeah, if it's three minutes, it's not enough. I have a lot to say about it. But essentially, it's not, I'm surprised it took this long for certain countries to announce. You know, it's not an if, but when. I'm not saying it's good or bad, but it's going to exist just because digital assets are going to be a benefit to trading digitally with fiat, traditional fiat. You know, there's advantages to going, to building a transaction validation into the transaction rather than the actual notes being issued. So that speeds up things in the future and a lot of adoption can be built around it. And it can interact with, you know, whatever else we're building in the blockchain space. So more of a when rather than an if right now. I think it's coming and we'll have to, you know, work around it. Whether you like it or not, right, depends on which side of the field you're at.
Any whispers on Malaysian on your Ringit coin? You can say no comment.
BNM territory, man, sorry, yeah.
You know, you know how the room complete, everyone starts smiling whenever you talk anything about like Central Bank or Bangla Gara or US, everyone's just like, oh, it's like. Yeah, it's tough, right?
Yeah.
It's hard.
Yeah, thoughts on CBDC?
CBDC from you, Aaron.
I'm gonna take just the two, three lines, inevitable. But I suspect it's gonna take some time to improve and perfect because it seems like a really cool, easy idea, but implementation is gonna be the tough one.
QY?
Yeah, I think, yeah, you know, I concur with Aaron. I mean, I think this is the trend that. Maybe arriving soon, I mean, it's here, it's a few banks in China already sub distributed. I think it will shift, you know, shake the whole financial landscape, you know, EC, I heard they are also doing the similar thing. I'm not sure, Ben or Japan are going to do the same or not. A lot central, I believe, maybe wrong. I'm not keen to move forward with this technology. The rest of the actually really is a tough, and when they want to distribute and launch. I mean, that happened as a South Asia country, we really have to. How the supply chain, how our trading, the traditions, you know, several, how is it going to work next, right? If by sticking on the previous one and without, you know, advancing to the next phase, I think you have to at least, you know, to ever get, you know, when we come to trade for the body, I should know. So I think it's, you know, what the, you know, I bring it back. But whether is it, you know, Ben and Gra will be the key players that bring this initiative or with more, I know, regular that changes like, push this, you know. I think it's realized who is going to be the primary issuance of the, of the stable climate for Ringit. And who is going to take the lead to clear the regulations? You know, they, I don't think technology side, you know, there's any issue on that, it's pretty much very easy. But on the regulation side, compliance side, you know, who, you know, how can we break through this? And, you know, when our market is still pretty much, I'm not familiar with if you that set like Bitcoin, how we can move to the next phase, I think this question.
Okay, so this last question, very quickly from each of you. Since you have, well, some of the community here, what would be your message if you're talking to them directly? On just a message for them and how they can help you advance cryptocurrency in Malaysia? We'll go with Job, Aaron, QY?
All right, well, come and trade with us, we give rebates. Blood, blood, blood aside, blood aside, I would tell the average Joe that, you know, do your own homework. There's a lot of scams in the crypto, under the guise of crypto. Don't just follow people blindly into the space, do your homework and make sure you don't get hurt. Invest only what you can afford to lose.
I'm gonna pick the security angle. We know, right, in the crypto community, there's been cases where people have had SMS hijacked. We know, we hear people's Telegram getting compromised. Please, please, please take the extra time to go and secure all your accounts. Whether it's Facebook, email, every single account to FAA. And, yeah, tell all your friends and family to do the same because, yeah, it's a lot of attacks going on.
Yeah, I think I'll end this with a promo code, you all, I just message at the Zoom. So please feel free to register, you haven't, if you have registered, let us know if you, you know, you missed out the promo code or something. You can see how it can happen. Yeah, just look forward for you all to try any of our, you know, we always can stay, actually, that. Telegram, you have all of us on social media, so just feel free for us and look forward to.
All right, so thanks, everyone. Thank you all the speakers for us taking your time, especially extending another half an hour. Thanks, EK Scan for sponsoring EKL and all the communities, Bitcoin Malaysia, Access Malaysia, G1 Group and Fintech Association Malaysia. And lastly, everyone else for listening in as well and bearing with us through the technical issues. Yeah, so QY already said that Tokenize is giving a free promo code worth 15 Ringgit, Tokenize ETH. And if nothing else, I will kind of just end it with giving a shout out to our community member, Jason Vandal, who is setting up Dow Records, whose mission is to reinvent the record label. So all of you feel free to step out of the meeting. I am just gonna play his song on YouTube before I end the meeting on my end. So, yes, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody, it's been, it's been fun.
Thank you, guys. Happy halving.
Happy halving.
Thanks, guys.
I'm always in four days with home vase. I don't play like ghosts faced with rage. This is not financial advice, but you better toss a coin till your man be nice. Hey, I stick around, I don't draw magic dice. I exit the grounds running when I strategize. I short rappers in the future, there's no CME. I plead BTC, bless the key to see. So when I found out, I had to bring the label back and build that stack. I got it planned out. This one's for the Bitcoin grab. So now I'm calling all my whales, where the big boys at? See, I took this track, minted as an NFT and sparked in that campaign. Using VAT, I said I'm free, the opposite is centralized. I paid my dues, quit talking, better recognize three years back. I would have called this my white paper. I'm still here, about to drop a hype fader. Hip hop the blockchain, that was my lifesaver. I don't need a black box to record the flight data. To the moon, no FOMO, I'll be home soon, but for now, hit a promo and emanate the tune. I don't hide behind words, this rap is open source. But if you use it in your act, I choose no remorse. My brute force is more than you can handle. Red like the wick on your what they candle. Led by that sick rapper, man named Vandal, eyes red by stick. Had to plan and claim samples, I got baggage, someone with a shit coins. I won't drop names, I can't fool with my fist points, I would drop fame. I don't ever want to disappoint, I want gains, let me leverage off of this joint.
Right, thanks, guys, thanks for your time. We will see you again at the next meetup. Bye.